Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 26th. It's 7:30 in the morning and it's raining. I don't know why I say that.
For now.
So bad, you know, 100 years from now, they know what the weather was. Let the record show the council's all here, awake and happy. Thank you. First thing on the agenda today is visitor and public comment. Is there any visitor comment? I don't see anybody rushing the microphone. Okay. We're going to go into the presentations and I think Chief Mason, I think you're first up this morning. Morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. This morning, I have the opportunity to introduce a new police officer to you, which is always a fun thing for us. So today, Officer Grant Hedrick is going to come forward for his story. And a little bit about Grant. He grew up here in Independence. Attended Central High School and graduated from there in 2010. He then went on to Boise State University where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Grant has been a solid member of our community. He has very high ethical values and I think he's well received by the community already because of the time that he has spent here. We're going to move Grant to the Police Academy in March for his four months of training. He started full-time with us January 1st and is in field training until he leaves to go to the academy. Carrying on a tradition that we started unintentionally, Grant is actually going to get married while he's in the Police Academy as well. So this will make the third one in a row that went over and he's going to get married while he's there. He's also marrying a local girl and I think their intent is to raise a family right here in this community as well. So, Mr. Mayor, would you give us the honors of story and Officer Grant Hedrick?
Great. Raise your right hand and be there for me. Aye, Grant Hedrick.
Aye, Grant Hedrick.
How you've been duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Say enough.
Say enough.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the laws and the Constitution of the United States.
State of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Independence.
The charter and ordinances of the City of Independence.
And I will perform the duties of the office of a police officer.
And I will perform the duties of the office of a police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities to help you out.
So, congratulations, Officer. I know there's some family members that want to take some photos. This is the moment. Come on up. Come on up. Do the photo. We have a moment to do photos. Mayor, you can sign a piece of paper here and... There you go. I get to be in the picture. This is what I get for being here. As I let folks know, it's... I know that many people are teaching today or doing other things and we're not offended if you have to go other... Audits and payment is just very important, but not necessarily, you know, stuff that people are dying to... With all due respect to our guests this morning. Thank you. In your pack and council members, we have a library board appointment. And a library recommendation. My stock and burger.
I move to approve the appointment of Roxy Stockberger to fill position number seven on the Independence Public Vote Report. Second.
Motion, second discussion. On their signature, I would say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Just for things that are going on, I know several of us are going to the Council of Government's annual dinner later on in the week and so I look forward to seeing other folks there, other things that are going on. The legislative back in session on Monday. Hold on to your hats, I think is the politest thing I can say at this moment. Yeah. Yeah, I think that kind of excites them. Let's move into council liaison reports, please. And I think Councilor Hoffmann, you have the first one up this morning.
Yes. I spoke with Sean yesterday. I've been kind of laid up with a bad knee and going to the orthopedic surgeon tomorrow to finally find out what's going on. The Parks and Rec Committee is working very hard to get involved in a lot of volunteer activities. They want to spread our chips on the path to the Sine Park and that is going to be their major doing for the future. Near future. We are looking forward to moving forward with the Valley Country site as well. Plugging that into the park.
Thanks, Eric. Historic preservation? Yes, we just met last Tuesday. It was actually a very short agenda. The main topic of discussion was what's going on with the historic preservation code and I know it's been coming up with some legal questions and do as much discussion on moving forward. Hopefully the best... I think the time might be the main thing that we have staff time to connect to more on that. So hopefully that will be moving forward. Thanks for that update. Councilor Peck from Western Days.
So the Western Days Commission has been meeting monthly. We have some vacancies on the commission which they've been working to fill. One of those is in the area of marketing. So we're still looking for volunteers in that area. However, we do have some volunteers from Western Virginia University Business Department that are working with the commission on some strategies. We also have a need for somebody who can oversee the finances of the commission. So if you have an interest in a background in bookkeeping or that sort of thing, get a hold of Karen in the city and we'll get you plugged in. The dates for Western Days this year are interesting. The 4th of July falls on a Monday. So that means that our hometown day will be on the 2nd. So just before I...
Thank you.
So Saturday, Sunday, and Monday are the...
I'm like, that gets awkward. So the riots roll in on Friday and get set up on Friday and then Sunday would be the hometown day for the fireworks. Or Saturday would be the hometown day for the fireworks. Sunday, I'm not sure.
And then Sunday is probably meeting.
I'm not sure. There's still things else to do.
More to come.
It's only six and a half months from...
That's right. We can wait.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Mr. Klein, I think you have an introduction to make as the...
Happy to do so. So we have with us today, I'm really happy to... I mean, there's a nice turnout from our company team from Tocula Properties. And I'm not supposed to demonstrate to you my poor memory skills. I'd rather I'm going to turn over to the types who introduce the team. When they're going to provide you a little bit of an overview of who they are, talk about their experience and then after that, I'd like for the council to consider one action item in reference to this, which is the exclusive negotiating agreement. So I will come back and talk to you about that after you've heard from the company team. They've made a long trip down to Portland and they probably should be here at various events powerfully raised.
Yeah, you're right about that.
Good morning and welcome, City Council.
Good morning and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and meet with you today. Let me begin. First, my name is Dwight Antai, the President and Owner of Tocula Properties. And let me introduce our team. Joining me here at the podium is Jeff Edinger, our Vice President, and then our team of architects here with Studio C Architecture, Jim Walker, Eric Pinnard, and Brian Bennett. And we also have on our team someone I think some of you know already, perhaps Mark Keller and Sandra Storm, who are providing our hotel support for our team. They're very much an integral part of our effort here. So what I thought we would do, if we may, is to share with you a little bit about who we are, how we came to Independence, what we found, and what we think some of the outcomes for this project might be and the benefits that it might create for the community. And so Jeff and I will kind of trade off here a little bit as we go along and please interrupt if there's any questions whatsoever. So Tocula Properties is a real estate development, construction, and property management company that owns and manages a portfolio of apartments and mixed-use developments in Oregon and Washington. And since 2008, we've been really laser focused on what we like to define as reemerging Main Street districts across Oregon and Washington. And Independence certainly fits that kind of criteria where you have this beautiful architecture and this wonderful downtown that once was the civic center of your community. It was years ago probably thriving with many businesses and it was really the happening place in the community. As time went on, things changed. The suburbs sucked a lot of wind out of a lot of historic downtowns and now we're starting to see this wonderful reemergence and revitalization of these wonderful historic downtown communities. And a lot of efforts being put in by citizens and leadership in communities to make this happen and that's certainly what we see here. I think, before I turn it over to Jeff here for a minute, one thing I think is important to share with you about us and that is that I have personally been at this business for 35 years and our company has reached a point in its maturity in what we do where we're not interested in just doing projects to do projects. We're laser focused on where we can make a difference, where we can be involved in transformative projects that have a catalytic effect on historic downtown communities and that's exactly why we're here today. So I want Jeff to talk a little bit about kind of, more specifically about how we came here and kind of some of the things we found and some of the things we see here in your community.
Mayor, Councilor, thanks for the opportunity. You guys are familiar with your city. You know all of the little nuances, all the wonderful things and the reasons why you live here. But I want to share just a little bit about some of the things that stood out. There are myriad of reasons, but these are a few of the reasons that really attracted us to enter the Independence. So we had the opportunity to respond to the RFQ, which was brought to our attention by a number of different individuals and partners, our architects being one of those. What we noticed when we came down, you guys have wonderful architecture, wonderful architecture. They're the great bones in this historic downtown. The connectivity to this site is just absolutely amazing. You see the river down there, the beauty of that, the environment, the proximity to the plaza is just fantastic. You have a dedicated, involved city staff. Now, that's very important to us when we're looking at investments of this magnitude. To know that the city staff is involved, knowledgeable, and behind the city and the future of the city is extremely important to us. That was very attractive. We came down and noticed that the opportunity to shape this community and responsibly develop it for the future of the community, just a fantastic opportunity. It's a significant site. The opportunity to add some density here to really affect and shape this community for years and years to come was just a wonderful, wonderful thing that we noticed. I personally am very excited to sit down there on that site in an outdoor plaza by a hotel, by a house of development, sitting on a beer and just enjoying this community. So, thank you for the opportunity.
You certainly won't be doing that during working hours. No, I think Jeff did a wonderful job of articulating and I would... Can I, if I may choose my own words to express that also. What's really clear to us is that this site is so determinate of the direction and future of the community. It's so large, it's so well-integrated with your Main Street district or should be and can be through proper development that is really going to set the tone for the future of the community. We take this responsibility extremely seriously. This is really, really important. It's transformative development, it's a catalytic development and landmark development for the City of Independence, but it's also a major development for us. And we're just so proud to have been selected to enter into negotiation on this. You have our commitment that we will move forward with the community's best interest in mind. We're very, very excited because we see some really dynamic potential outcomes from this and we think they're more than potential. We've had this experience in other historic downtown communities where we can help create a transformative opportunity that can re-energize and recatalyze your downtown. And if we think about it, the mixed uses of a hotel housing brings more people living in your downtown, more people visiting downtown, and then providing services that help activate your downtown. At fulfillment, this development is going to add a tremendous number of new permanent residents and those folks are going to want to spend their money and access local services on your Main Street. And I think you're going to see a tremendous improvement in the general vibrancy and vitality on your sidewalks and your Main Street district. And I just am just so excited and we're so excited, our entire team, to be part of this important process. So thank you very much.
Council members, does anybody have questions of the speakers this morning? I just want to say we're really excited. We're very, very excited for this. As she, I like the words landmark. This is huge. It's been on our, in our thought pattern for decades and we're excited to be able to move forward. Without prolonging the conversation, I'm going to switch it over to Mr. Klein. We have some work for us to do.
So I just want to echo the comments. We really enjoy working with this team. That's been a, it's been a great find. We're really happy, you know, a little team of this quality can find us and work with us and we're sure that Emily will go back and review the videos so she can see we're visiting also. Came in a little late.
7:40.
So, you got any questions, Council?
No, I guess I was waiting to basically to know about the negotiating agreement in terms of...
I was about to, I was about to get there, but...
Sorry.
That's great. Did you want to...
Do what you do first.
So in front of you actually is a copy of the proposed exclusive negotiating agreement. This is what gives certainty to both sides as we start forward on this venture together of developing this property. So this, for, as you can see by the terms of the agreement, provides some security for these 180 days to the development team that we will not put the property back on the market. So we'll keep it off the market. There's two optional extensions of 120 days as well. The end goal for this work product is to get us to the point where we have a, as called, a disposition and development agreement, a DDA in the business, and that will spell out all the precise terms of how this property will be developed. It will have, you know, a planning, the zoning in place, or it will be in the process of these, our cost share in this, our participation in this, the price that we will be paying for the property and the phasing of this and so forth. There's quite a lot of elements that will be part of that DDA. Can you hear me okay? I see somebody's drinking. So that's the point of this. Through, during the course of this period, we will, we meet weekly, at least at this point we are, meaning weekly to hammer out the elements of that document. We were, we will put together memorandums and understanding, perhaps there's one, maybe multiple ones, that will spell out some of the, you know, some of the pieces of that old DDA and they will eventually be borrowed together into one document. So that's, that happens as, that's happening on a weekly basis. And I'll be recording it monthly during our real estate conversations on more of the details on that. So the document we have out before you has been vetted by both parties and obligated by both parties and we are very, you know, very protective. It protects all our interests and gets us to where we want to get to. And I want to, I want to characterize this to you as a document amongst partners. I laugh when they call it a prenup, but you know, it's not too hard to mean that. You know, we are partners in this development together. We will be throughout. This is, we didn't just sell the property, we maintain ownership and we want to, you know, help direct the course of development and have our vision fulfilled. So this is what is the intended document to do that. So that's really my presentation on this. You have my staff report, we got the documents. Do you have questions on that?
Questions for staff?
Yeah, on Exhibit A to the agreement, it mentions the different criteria for development. Okay. And one of the things that I like to start right at the beginning to address is sustainability in our community. And I didn't see anything in this exhibit that said... What I'm looking for, like in the third, I think the third or fourth paragraph was, it says "COVID scale of architecture to complement and enhance the historic Main Street environment" while also pointing to the future. And I'd like to add, "including policies and strategies that include sustainable building, design, and operations." Is that possible to get... Okay, look, I, the architect's going, yes.
Beautiful little practice.
I know. When we did the selection thing, I saw that word in there multiple times. And so, but I didn't see it anywhere.
Do you have that language written down?
I do. I wrote it down myself, it's in pencil.
Are you okay with that? Absolutely, absolutely. Good job.
If it's broad enough that, you know, that... But I feel that what we're doing today and this next, is going to impact the city and our citizens for way beyond me, you know. And so I want to make sure that we have something in there that pushes this a little bit. Does anybody disagree?
Everybody, you've got consensus here that everybody's okay. And Mayor, are you good to face a picture? Can I answer? Okay. So we'll get that language in there.
Okay.
Great addition and we will then just talk to them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay. Without further ado, this is an action item and...
Oh, we just moved.
Yeah, go ahead and please do.
I move to approve the exclusive negotiating agreement as amended.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
On a second. By Jerry, is there further discussion? Everybody okay? Feel good? Like it? Please do.
Does that amendment include the authorization to allow the city manager to act on...
That's what you meant by your, okay, as motion, you're right.
Yes.
Right. And as presented, as a motion presented in the... Want to make sure, okay. I'm excited for this. I appreciate, by the way, the detail in the agreement. All in favor, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, looking forward to working with you. Okay. Moving forward. It's Gloria. We have a finance report, I think.
Good morning. Good morning. I believe our audit report is next on the agenda. And we have Kami Austin here from the audit firm Marina and Company to present that.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome, City Council.
Good morning. So again, my name is Kamala Austin and I'm Partner with Marina and Company and I was in charge of the city's office for the year ending June 30, 2015. So I will be presenting the results of city's audit as well as the urban renewal agency. So the audit reports are dated December 30th and both the audit report for the city and the urban renewal have a clear opinion, which is what you want. And in association with our audit, we are allowed full access to city records and the city staff as well as access to you. So you all received a lot of funding. Did they have any difficulties? There wasn't any kind of difficulties or no access to records would be required to communicate that to you. So this year, the city prepared a caper, which is called a comprehensive annual financial report. And so that's something that they hadn't done in the past. And so in addition to the basic financial statements, there are also an inventory section of the financial statements and a stat section in the back. And the city has presented their report to the Government Finance Officers Association for compliance with certificate of excellence in financial reporting. And we believe that the financial statements will get the... In addition to a financial audit, we also do a compliance audit and results of our compliance are on page 106 of the city's report. And basically, we tested compliance with collateral, indebtedness, budgets, insurance, programs funded from outside sources, use of highway funds, use of investments, and public contracting and purchasing. And there were two items that we noted, that the urban renewal project fund has a deficit fund balance of 1.1 million and the park SDC has a deficit fund balance of 74,000. So this year, the city implemented a MIGASB, that's GAZB 68, and that basically is reporting their PERS liability. So in the past, the PERS liability, unhunted liability was never reported in the financial statements. It wasn't required to be reported in the financial statements. It was just reported in the notes. And this year, the state of Oregon went in and calculated that liability for everyone that is in the PERS and then we report that in the statements. So when you compare these statements to prior year's statements, you need to consider that. And the note for the intention is on page 48 and it's about 10 pages long, so it's pretty extensive. And then also something that's not comparable to prior year is the city went in and they reported a new allowance for doubtful accounts for the Monet loans, which they should have reported to you, I believe, in December. And so if you look on page 36 of the financial statement, there's a note on that. And then in addition to those two things, we also have a note on long-term debt. I think there's a lot of useful information. I think it's one of the most useful notes in the financial statements. If there's one thing that you would want to look at, I was just looking at that note. There's also the NDA, which is at the very start of the financial statements and it's a good overview of financial statements rather than, you know, going through the 130 pages, you know, if that was something that you would look at. That's what, that would be, that would be a really good overview and I strongly encourage you to look at that part. So does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Speaker? Was enjoying the week.
It was? Well, you know, actually there's some kind of interesting information in the stat section too because it has 10-year trends and so there really isn't a lot of speed stuff in this.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm gonna move us, are we good? Okay. I'm gonna move us, uh, juggle things around a little bit. Yeah, since we have, uh, a guest, uh, since, and I expect this Greek inventory report to take a little longer. I'm gonna move up, without objection, I'm gonna move up, uh, Mr. Patton from Minnet. Is that okay with everybody? Because I know he's trying to get into, uh, some additional activities this morning. And so, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, you're in this household. Uh, Councilor Diana, Councilor Jerry, Councilor Nancy, Mayor John, Councilor Marley, Councilor Lawrence, Councilor Bob. There's a reason why I did that, but I'm not going to go into that. In the newspaper recently Buzz Rossar reported that Minnet has a consistent 60% penetration rate. Uh, for the purpose of broader conversation, Buzz reported a longstanding penetration statistic. That fa, figure has been updated, and the data supporting its update has been put in your hands earlier. Minnet's actual penetration rate continues to be above 75%, actually 78.2%, even at a time of year when there is traditional slippage occurring in our customer account. Uh, this month, Minnet reports to the councils of its advisory committees. Uh, Minnet has three advisory committees. One, a financial advisory committee. This committee reports directly through the board, through all meetings, uh, are attended by, though all meetings are attended by Minnet's financial management staff. Citizen members of this committee include Chairman Buzz Rossar, Ken Day, Gary Van Horn, Norris Johnson, Johnston, Ben Meyer, Laurie Bush, and Mark Dunmire. By its charter, the committee consists of at least seven members, two of whom are currently the finance directors of each city. These two members may not be committee chairs. Here, here's how their, uh, the charter describes the committee's role. The purpose of the finance advisory committee is to assist the board and directors in its oversight of Minnet's, uh, Minnet's financial policies, business financial strategies, and debt slash capital structure, and to assist the board in its oversight of, one, the integrity of the financial reporting of the company, two, the independent qualifications and performance of the company's external independent auditor, and the performance of its internal CFO, along with the company's compliance with legal and, uh, all legal and regulatory compliance. This is an advisory and supervisory committee. The overreaching advisory role of the committee is to routinely, or as required, review and examine and assess the detailed financial information to provide the board analysis, assessment, evaluation, and assurance to rely upon in its decision-making with respect to ongoing business operations and any expansion thereof. Financial planning and budgeting and financial control with respect to the company's ability to achieve its goals and objectives. The alignment of the expectations of the company is set forth by the board as well as the cities of independence and mine. The financial advisory committee meets monthly in advance of the board meeting. The committee chair delivers a report to the board during their meeting. The committee chair delivers a report, uh, to the board during the meeting, sorry for being repetitive. The committee discusses current business and new income opportunities for Minnet and carefully weighs its discussions and conclusions in the interest of giving well-considered advice to the Minnet board of directors. Secondly, we have a marketing and technology committees. Initially, these were two separate committees, but today, the marketing and tech committees meet together since one aspect is so completely to the other in terms of business and in growth. Marketing and tech reports directly to Minnet was able to nimbly apply their suggestions. The members of this committee represent the voices of the community at large and assess greatly and focusing on how best from up Minnet through marketing and through technological availability and capability. Members of this committee are drawn from local businesses and organizations. Current members are Mont Killen, Scott Riordan, Chris Horn, Julie Sancer, Marshall Guthrie, Dave Ritchie, and Paul Hurd. There is board business institutional and community representation. Minnet interacts with this committee to look for marketing direction and bring marketing ideas for their potential refinement and endorsement, though they may need not be conducted according to Oregon's public meeting laws. Meetings of Minnet's advisory committees are always open to the public. In the marketing and tech committee meetings, guests may expect being asked for their input and suggestion. The financial advisory committee meets the fourth Tuesday of the month at 1:30 at Minnet. Uh, I believe we're meeting now at Henry Hill. Uh, and that would be today. The next meeting is today, the 26th. The marketing and tech committee meets the second Tuesday of the month at 3:00 PM at Minnet. The last was on January 4th. The next will be February 9th. Those are the committees that advise Minnet and its board and directors, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions for speaker? I have one. Uh, thank you for the information. Uh, so, how is the business going? Are we on time, on target?
I always want more off the business than wants to deliver, and I always am anxious with timelines. I want to exceed them rather than beat them. I'm very pleased with, uh, the absolute understanding of the business of our business and what we can and cannot achieve with the marketplaces that we have available to us. The key word is understanding what we can achieve with the markets that we have available to us. Therefore, we have an exceedingly strong focus on the markets that we make available to us and are making outstanding progress in that respect.
Okay. Additional questions? This point? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go into community developments. Inventory report, Mr. Tanka. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Council. I came here this morning to, uh, talk to, uh, and to introduce someone to you. Um, I'm here to talk to you about asphalt and pavement, and it could be like to joke that it's, uh, a boring subject, but it is probably by far our largest asset in the city. We, uh, budgeted for and completed a, a pavement management, um, report that was done by Pavement Services, Inc., and they're out of Portland. They actually, um, were the firm who did our original report back in the 90s. So, they were good, open to work with, had a good history, um, in their files. Where we were, uh, and where we are now, um... We're about 27 miles of Broadway, by the way, in case you ever wonder. It's a 70 mile measurement. So, it's about 27 miles. Uh, if you had a chance to look at the report, um, there, he talks a lot about, in there about findings that, uh, the results of the report and the costs associated moving into the future of maintaining that asset. And, uh, Mr. John Duvall is here to summarize that report and to talk about the methods used in this type of engineering report. I just wanted to point out to you that I was here back in the 90s when the first report was done. Following that, um, we had a series of, like, bond measures. Uh, took, I think, three, three tries to get a bond measure passed. At that time, the bond measure was large enough to fund, um, asphalt overlays under approximately half of the entire city. So, that was 20 years ago. The design life for those streets is coming due pretty much right on schedule. At this point, uh, we spend about $100,000 a year on pavement maintenance and overlays in different locations throughout the city. The, one thing that came out of this report is an actual sort of action plan for us for spending in the future and how to prioritize that money. I was here, I wasn't here this morning to ask you for action of any sort. I think what we would like to do is, is bring the entire report back to you at one of your planning sessions in the near future and go over it in more detail. But, but John is here, is at the end of the contract, and I wanted him to sort of summarize his report and speak to some of the major findings. Uh, he's already done that at staff level. I thought maybe it was a bigger opportunity for the council to hear it. It's only 10 or 15 minutes. With that, I'll introduce Mr. John Duvall. He's president of Pavement Services, Inc., and, um, also here to answer questions of John.
Good morning, welcome to the council.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is John Duvall with Pavement Services, Inc., at Portland. Um, we have completed, as Mike said, we completed this pavement management study, and, um, this is just an opportunity for us to cover some of the, in a broad, rich manner, some of the summary, I suppose, of what we've assessed and what we think that the city should maybe, uh, direct its attention in the future. I was struck this morning, actually, listening to the testimony for the, the other comments that was always nice to see in the office or being sworn in. What a wonderful sight for the city, it's new, young, bright, that future avenue in the city, that's wonderful. But, the thing about it, I, I was pretty interested in, but we have the development, we're talking about the new development here in the city, this landmark, uh, property that's going to be developed, beginning, uh, a new asset the city is going to be bargaining and managing over many, many years. We also discussed, and I'm sure that, uh, because we're, we're about financing and audit that they've conducted. So, we have this, uh, combination of, of topics, and here we are talking about, in a sense, the same thing. A large asset that's owned and managed by the city, and how best can we manage the finances necessary to, to maintain this asset over time? That's really what this, uh, report is trying to discuss. Um, and we do approach this from an asset management standpoint. We do look at, uh, this 27, 70 miles, 700 miles of Broadway as being an extremely valuable asset that has been invested into over many years by the city and deserves to be maintained at a high level to provide a level of service that's commensurate with the needs of the citizens and the modern public here in the city of Independence. Um, so, that's really the outlook that we approach this type of study with. Um, what we're trying to do, in a sense, is get our arms around the totality of this asset, understand the asset, the value of the asset, and to then predict its condition over time. Um, we do that primarily using visual means. So, we do a very detailed visual study. You may have seen some of our staff members on site here this past summer, uh, walking of the, the city streets in orange vests and looking down, pouring, peering at the pavement, taking notes, and, and documenting their findings on a computer or a notebook. We, uh, we use a, a national standard called, uh, the American Society of Testing Materials standard to do the visual survey. So, we rate the pavements on 0 to 100 scale, and then we enter that into information into a database that's created to help manage this asset for the city. That, uh, database is called Paver. It's a, it's a, developed by the Corps of Engineers back in the 1970s, has been modernized and is now at 7 version, I believe, here in the year 2016. So, that database was implemented and established for the city. Uh, the data is, is then recorded in that database, and then we're able to do some, uh, forecasting, uh, using that data to forecast, using known deterioration models, how the city's street condition will be deteriorating over the years. So, right now, uh, the city of Independence is kind of at a cusp. Uh, overall, the, the city, uh, street system rates approximately 70, um, 71. The exact, the, the, on the scale of 0 to 100, which is that kind of what we call a critical point, a critical pavement condition index in the life of a pavement system. So, in totality, we're at a kind of inflection point, and where it will be expected and what the forecast, the model forecast is that will be significant deterioration over the next five to 10 years. And we look really specifically at just five years, and using the models in this Paver system, we're able to forecast what we believe to be increasing maintenance and repair needs for the city's street system to maintain the PCI, to maintain that condition at the current level. Uh, we also looked at three other budget scenarios. So, let me say that again. We totally looked at four budget scenarios for the city of Independence. The first being, what we just, what we need to, to just maintain the system as it is and have the current condition. Um, we came up with a, an annual budget requirement of approximately $825,000 per year to maintain the current, uh, condition of the city's system. We also looked at the current, uh, investment, or more of about $100,000 per year. And, uh, using that, um, model, we, we ended up, after five years, showing deterioration to an average rating of about 62. So, a reduction in condition across the city. Um, we also looked at two other levels, one getting a $500,000 a year, um, investment to maintain the city's street system, and doing that, uh, we will slow reduction in deterioration to 64 over a period of about five years. We always look at this eliminating backlog scenario. It's kind of a fitment of our imagination to imagine that we could just invest all that's needed in the next year or so, but it helps us understand, again, the totality of the problem. And, uh, that, uh, indicates that the totality of the problem is somewhere in the order of about, uh, a 10, 8.5 million dollar problem, in a sense of what would it take to repair all of the, the known issues and eliminate maintenance and, or backlog, was really what we're discussing. So, that's the summary of the budget scenarios that we looked at. The last thing I will, uh, say is that, uh, we did one extra thing here as part of this study in addition to this visual study. We did some non-structural testing and some structural testing of pavement systems, and , uh, we essentially, uh, used that information to help understand the cost of, of the known, you know, the needed repairs. And so, as we were formulating some of these budget numbers and unit costs, we had that additional piece of data that helped us, uh, frame this, uh, this budget discussion. So, with that, I, I think that, uh, that's a brief summary of the findings of the report which really talked about condition of the street system as it is today, the forecast for the future, and some of the budget needs that are going to be appearing on our eyes in the year as we try to make this system. Uh, let's think about this, uh, city of Independence, in no way, uh, unique in this regard. We've consulted a number of different municipalities, uh, the state of Oregon, uh, counties, and we're all in the same boat. This is a result of the fact that we've invested heavily many, many years ago in building up the system, and it's now a mature system that, like many other things, needs maintenance and repair in order to keep it in the condition that we, that we've enjoyed over the last years. So, you're not alone in this struggle. So, with that, unless, uh, there's anything else that we need to discuss, that'd be a brief summary again of, of the report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the presenter this morning?
So, you'd say we're about, about average compared to other cities as far as level of repair or, or level of deterioration?
Well, uh, so, that, that range is quite extreme. You imagine, some cities have, are newer, um, have, uh, a more recent development, and, you know, you imagine some suburban communities, for example, uh, in the Portland metro area, as you're more familiar with, they've pushed out. Those cities are relatively new, but they don't have older infrastructure, as you can hear, some of your streets take back many, many decades. And that is, uh, to a certain degree, one of the reasons where, why we think that the inflection point- point is so important here, and when you start to see decay in an older system, things tend to go south quickly, so to speak. So that is an underlying concern here in the city of Independence, at the age of the underlying infrastructure. But to answer your question, you know, it's really all that we have, frankly.
And you said you studied at like a $100,000 level, with a $8.5 million and a half million level. If we were to say, look at a $200,000 level, could we use a trend line and say we're going to be about here? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes, sir, that's exactly the point. We did a kind of bracket at this range, at a current investment level of about $100,000. I mean, we looked at a $500,000 investment level, and we also looked at this maintained current condition level of about 825. Which you're absolutely right, which is, you can interpolate, if you will, you can draw conclusions about what the investment in the middle will yield in terms of the results. So I guess you can do that if you choose to invest in some other level.
I just noticed in hearing your report about the overall weighted average is 71, but the condition distribution is 50%, or 56% good, 22% fair, and 22% poor. So at some point, we have a lot of streets here that are in pretty awful condition.
That's right.
Do we have a way of prioritizing street repair thing, you know, I guess we do, of course, you know, most traveled or least traveled and deal with it in that way as well?
That's right. We looked at this in a couple of different ways. We broke the system down into three categories, arterial, collector, and residential streets. We did isolate the condition in those groups, and the overall rating of the arterials and the residential's is somewhere in order, again, average overall weighted PCI is around 70. Collectors tend to be able to alter condition. But you are right, we have a lot of pavements that are, that are in the poor category. And this is actually, goes to kind of a philosophical, if you will, you can imagine it's a philosophical element of pavement management, valid or not, there is, but we have a preservation philosophy that we would recommend that the city adopt, meaning that preserving the good pavements that are in good condition, that is the highest priority before we spend money on the poor pavements. And it seems a little bit counterintuitive, but the thinking behind this is that we want to maintain, and there's a curve in here that shows up a couple times in this report, you may have seen this if you glanced through this, but with this curve, and I'm referring to the curve that's on page seven of our report, but there's a long period of time, generally, when pavements are at a relatively high level of condition. And then you reach this inflection point, and things tend to deteriorate quickly. So the idea being that if we can maintain the pavements that are in good condition, we have, we can enjoy, if you will, lower-cost treatments that are used to maintain those pavements, things like sorry seals or fog seal, steel coat type of treatments, crack repairs and small patching, those types of treatments are much more effective when pavements are in good condition. When they slip to the poor, fair, and then in poor condition, we have to do much more intensive repairs, maybe an overlay, but maybe we have to actually go in and remove pavement layer, recondition base layers, and then build, almost reconstruct the pavement. So as you can imagine, that's a much more costly activity. So the priority is, we believe in a priority, it's been proven to be that the lowest, lowest, to arrive at the lowest lifecycle cost over many years is to focus on the good pavements, maintain them, and use those inexpensive treatments first, and then devote remaining funds to bringing up the condition of the lower-rated pavements. So it's a little bit of a counterintuitive approach, but we would recommend it, and it's a much more costly activity.
I have a question, so Mike. Were there any surprises in this to you, or pretty much have it under control?
Actually, yeah, actually, I was surprised that, overall, we were rated about 70, which means our, most used streets are in pretty good condition. But as described particularly in this figure here, you can see what is really worrisome is in a five-year period, if not more maintenance money is applied, that we're going to lose that, and it'll be much more expensive in the future. Like John said, all cities in the Valley right now are grappling with this problem. On Dallas, Corvallis, Albany, Salem, everyone is, everyone is going through some form of management study to try to figure out how to fund and how to preserve the system that they have. That's what I really wanted to come back to you at some point in the future and talk a little bit more in detail about it. I think if everyone here realizes that if we don't have pavement problems to spend citywide, but there are other ways to process and move forward and maintain what we have. So I was actually pleased with the report.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
So will you bring this up in the February or September?
Yeah, I think I was hoping the plan was for, you know, for more thoughtful conversation as opposed to just, I had a question. Did I conclude?
Oh, no, no, no.
I really just wanted to echo some of the comments that you made, that yes, when mayors get together, it's a discussion of streets. And as you mentioned, the different communities are in different places, but it's, everybody has street needs, and everybody's trying to figure out how best, how best to do that, and it's all of us. I just had a question again, that on the maps, we do have the black line that's Highway 51 through, I got lost a little bit amongst the charts. Page 51 is in there. The black line where Highway 51 is, that's still the state's responsibility, is that correct?
Yes.
Was there any, I know you didn't spend time analyzing a state asset, but are, is there a need upon that, that state highway also for activities? I live on, I live on Monta Street. Okay.
That's all of that, you.
I was asking.
Thank you.
And so, you know, I was wondering if there's any amicable kinds of comments either from either of you.
We've made each other know more about the state upcoming funding, which you mentioned in the legislature. Of course, they're taking on, hopefully, another transportation bill that would include more maintenance funds. You may know more about that than me, but it takes a lot of bowing in to get maintenance work done on Highway 51. It's a lower priority state facility. You can see that the project the city completed approximately 10 years ago is starting to fail in a lot of areas. And right now, if, like John said, if they were to focus on an asset that comes through town, like that project that's only 10 years old, they probably can preserve it fairly cheaply, but I don't see a lot of action up there. When I talk to people, it's basically deafening right now, they just don't have any money. I thought you...
Yeah, I had one other thing that I, we work with, working with DOT quite a bit, we're working on a project south here in the Valley on 1.6, Western Virginia, a major project I have. But I can tell you that what they, their system is not unlike what we did here, except it's a little bit, of course, their system's vast, and they use an automated distress system where they have the ability to send a van that drives every mile of state highway with the, I mean, my understanding is they drive every mile of state highway each year and record things like distresses and what they can observe. And from that, they take that data, it's, again, a similar type of pavement management system, not exactly like what the city of Independence has now, but a similar system where they sort and determine priorities, and out of that system comes regulations or some excess of repairs, which is one of the state facilities. So not entirely different than what you have. The main difference is their system's vast, and they're doing it using a more automated system, as I understand.
Okay, great. Well, we'll just have to let the city know, the state know about the hot bull of Monta Street. It's not in front of my house, it's further.
The state have an app?
Now, that was what I was going to ask, curious, and this is a little bit off-topic, how many bids have you had on empty works since I've watched?
I think public works has responded to two.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Was one of you?
And I don't know about the rest.
As of yesterday, there were nine empty requests that have neither been made, most of those have been completed at this time. Great.
Great.
Okay, please.
First off, the report is, it's good. I liked it, I enjoyed reading it. I think it's going to be really helpful to us in thinking through what our strategies ought to be going forward. The question I have is, this tends to look at what we have in the looks in the past. When we think about the new subdivisions that are coming on all of these streets that we're putting into service, do you have any thoughts for us on what we might consider in terms of reserving those roadways?
Well, my thoughts are that this is, again, a time-honored issue between development and then city ownership, maintenance, and repair of street assets. Oftentimes, the, you know, it's a little bit of a, we see it everywhere, developing new streets, subdivisions, new streets, streets for new subdivisions, we're approaching some kind of a minimum criteria that's established, and generally not with a long-term vision in hand. So, you know, the best thing we can do, as you see, is to, as soon as those new streets come into the system, is to get them into the inventory and begin to monitor their condition, and again, to preserve them, treat them, and preserve them as soon as we can to maximize the life that we can get out of them. If we have concerns about whether they actually meet the overall structural requirements on terms of names of the city, that's kind of another question about what the standards are and minimum specifications, what are. But really, the parts that I hope I didn't mess that up too much.
I'm just curious also if there's some type of a sinking fund idea that has been developed somewhere, if you're forward planning, you create funding in the future for streets as they deteriorate, when you see that somewhere?
Yeah, we've seen all sorts of different funding mechanisms. Sinking funds, like, in my view, are probably one of the best alternatives. More recently, and we did a little bit of discussion on this, we're seeing the advent of street toll fees here in the state of Oregon, within the last 10 or 15 years or so, but it's been quite a lot of interest in that. And of course, bonds and so on and so forth. But I think that your idea of a sinking fund makes a lot of sense, actually, and you tie it to a known need in the future, and then bring for it, and happy to have reserves in the hand, ready to take action in a timely, good time.
Because this kind of seems like it needs to be both, one is to take care of the problems that have been created previously, but also come up with a strategy for addressing future problems that we're creating now on the pay of new streets.
Absolutely. And just one more topic along that line, there's new interest in long-life pavements, both at the state or at the level nationally. They typically design for a 20-year lifecycle. We're now, with the advent of the materials and structural analysis, we're accommodating a 40- and 50-year design life for new structures. Now, again, that's a, that's kind of a, you know, you also have to build that, and you have to have some pretty tough material requirements to have to make that happen. But there are ways to squeeze even more life out of these pavement systems, but that's sort of it.
Great, thank you for your work on this.
Additional questions? We'll take this up in one of our work sessions where we can have. And I'm going to, what I'm going to suggest is, council members, that when we're done with your packet today, I'm going to ask that you give it back to Karen, so she can keep the reports, because we may want to, unless you want to keep it yourself, I sometimes, my desk becomes full, and so rather than just ever having to repaint, create all 100 pages of it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You gotta pay the report.
Pay it.
That's what, you know, that might be helpful, Karen, if you write, because then we don't have to repay, we don't have to do it again. Okay, thank you so much, Jen, appreciate it. City manager report, if you have anything to share.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, Council. So I have to just say, in follow-up to that, listening to a paving report here, listening to a paving report, I don't, this is much more uplifting, when you're talking about design lives of 40 years versus 10 years, because of weather, so that's the good news. And there's still, there's a lot of pretty good data sitting there. So, follow-up, the empty request question, that actually was going to be my first item I reported on. We do, we have had nine requests that I mentioned eight of which have been disposed of. The only one that's outstanding really is one that's on air control, and I would say the street light request. So that was referred to as center power. Hopefully, that will be lifted from our list shortly. So that was as of yesterday, I don't know about today, but that was the first thing. I will attempt to get you some reports, we have some, we actually have some good reports that are being added to empty works, managed reports, so you guys can see what the source of concerns are, including accommodations, we've had at least one of those added in as well. And where they're coming from, what the subject matter is, and, you know, how quickly they're being managed. I'll also share with you that the fireworks is getting ready to ask for more personnel there shortly. As a result of empty works. Will it more? So I wanted to, some of you have asked about the community academy, and I just wanted to share with you that the chief has told me to advise me to let you know that even if you cannot attend all these sessions, you're actually welcome to talk, to attend some of those sessions, if you would either talk with chief or Sergeant Manuelus, is that?
Go ahead.
Sergeant Gilbert, I'm sorry. They can share with you what, where there's space available and try to accommodate your ability to, you know, to listen in on whatever that you'd like to listen in on. It's a, it's a real good program, I haven't taken really good feedback already, so. I think I shared with the chief last night, I'll share with you again, the city hall motion for something definite is scheduled still for February 4th, so we'll hopefully have a disposition of that time on the property. I'll move on to those questions. I will be at the Lake Oswego City Council, Lake Oswego City Council tonight, you know, you have a real interest in fiber installs, so I'll be, they asked me to talk a little bit about us, I have a nice little report about fiber and mine operations that way. So I think, you know, I think we all view that the availability of fiber and internet and fiber speeds is a huge asset for this community, and I think they probably be well advised to go to that model for that part of the telecom. Meeting with the new choir chief today, I'll call him, so they, that should be, he's just on board, so looking forward to that. Saturday, the chamber is going through its strategic planning for the year, so we'll be doing that. We're considering, well, I think these have been in our reports, so you've seen some of this, but we're looking, you will likely see a resolution shortly for a refunding of our outstanding, of portions of our outstanding civic center bonds and money net bonds to achieve some current operational savings. The interest rates are favorable, and so we're trying to take advantage of that market for those, those debt issues that are, that we can do that. You can refund portions, but I'm a little far out on outstanding debt, so that's what we'll be doing that. We also will be, we also are looking at some new issues, new debt issues with respect to capital improvement plan, we've talked a moment to you about that in the past, both on water, a little over a million, and on sewer. a million, and on sewer, a little over four million. Of that four million debt issue, we hope to get a good portion that's in support, grant support through USDA. We are, they are, they have talked to us, we feel very, we feel pretty positive about our, our chances there. We are also have issued our proposals for a new financial advisor. Ray Bartlett has retired, and as hard as we try, I don't think we can drag him out for retirement anymore times. We've gotten him a couple of times now, but I think that he may want to stay put. You should be hearing from our underwriter, Matt Donahue, at our next meeting together with resolutions supporting the refunding issue. So that's coming up at your next council meeting. And then I think we've, we've talked about the dinner tomorrow, the hag again, we've talked about Valley concrete, so that's what I have on my list today.
Questions? Okay, thank you. We have a second quarter financial report?
I just wanted to ask if you had any questions that I could answer regarding the audit report? If there was anything else that there that you were wondering about?
Very good.
So I included my second quarter report in your packet and really don't have anything to add from, from my report. So really just looking for questions, if you had any, wanted any clarification on that report?
I had some questions. On the SDCs from Riverview Apartments?
Yes.
If we give them full credit for the park SDC, or is that still kind of pending based on the wall fields?
We gave them, I don't know that it was a full credit on the SDCs, the park SDCs.
Not on the park SDCs, I believe on the street SDCs it was.
Right. And that would, yes. And so it was, it was a good portion of the parks SDCs, but then the street SDCs was the, was pretty much all.
Okay. And then under, then the general fund, under like licenses and permits, it shows us a 25% of budget. Is that, is that timing issues where we get more permits and licenses in the spring or why are we 25% as opposed to like 50%?
Yes, probably. As, as spring comes up here in a couple of months, we'll start seeing more building permits and that sort of thing, so, yep.
Cool. If I could add, if we, if we can't get you answers to that, we're happy to respond to you writing afterwards, and some of those are beneficial.
Does, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I thought I just wanted to do.
Okay.
And then I had one other question, the water fund, capital outlay, just at 199%. Is that to do with the irrigation?
Yes, yes. That is 100% because of the irrigation project that we had not budgeted for in, in that.
Okay. Good. Additional questions? Essentially on time on target.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to new business city manager compensation. I provided council members with a, some background on what other cities are. I have, I got from Gloria this morning, I didn't make copies of it, but where Mr. Klein currently is and where some of our neighbors are. And I'd like to recommend that after a solid review, that we consider a three and a half percent salary increase, which would be pretty much like what we did back in the last couple of years. Just a quick question, what was the difference between the second, third page? And this was out of the report, one of those, or what was? Do you remember? Because if, you know, the figures, and independents in Monmouth were not. Yeah, this, this is a couple, I think that they were, the LPGI, I didn't want us to have to spend the money to do a complete, brand-new updated salary survey, so used a couple of slightly older ones. Okay?
I didn't know what the list was being looked at, so.
This is the, something LPGI guy stuff that we, that we decided, that's certainly your own. Right. But I wanted to give you perspective.
What, how old are they, where's the date?
This is a couple of years, if I recall correctly. I didn't want to, frankly, I didn't want us to spend a couple thousand bucks to do.
There would be in this.
I think it's just that.
But the report that says LGPI 2016, that's a print update?
I think it's a print update. So currently, Mr. Klein makes, his base salary is 109, and the salary in Dallas is 140, and the salary in Monmouth is 126.
And in Monmouth, it's not?
140. And I think that, that sounds like, looking at where I go, that, that, the Dallas one, does that include the recent two and a half percent? Well, do you remember?
I do not recall, I believe it does.
Yeah, I think, I thought it did.
That's another.
I did, so we've got Dallas 140, Monmouth 126, and current city managers with 109 here. So refresh my memory, so you've been here about, what, six, five, six and a half years?
Five and a half years.
Five and a half years. And you've had one raise, about three, you remember, three percent, three and a half percent?
Well, I had a combined raise, it's a common, so the first raise I had was my fourth year, fourth anniversary. And that was a combined cost of living and merit, which I think was a total big percent at the time.
Right.
And then I've had one merit, I received a money, COLA since.
How much was that?
Two and a half.
The last merit raise is how much?
Well, the combination of COLA, I don't know if the rate had was with combination, I believe it was eight percent between merit and credit cost of living.
Well, COLA is probably just.
Yeah, we brought, we brought it in in August of 10 at 98, and then there was an increase of 14 to 106, and an increase of July of 15 to 109. Let me run that again.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, so a three and a half percent salary increase would bring it to 112, almost 113.
Yeah, that's about it.
I'm good with that.
Other people, okay? If someone will make a motion?
Does that include a COLA, or is it in addition to a COLA?
Addition to.
Right, so that's already, that's already.
Already.
Yes.
Okay, she made a motion. I knew, I just said, oh, I didn't know that.
Can I ask a question on that motion? Is that as of May anniversary?
Oh, excuse me, that, that was what, thank you, that was my, that's my notes. Because we delayed this, partially because we want to get some other things done, like to do that from, from the August date. From all, what you're doing at the beginning, beginning of the, beginning of fiscal year makes it clean, Florida is doing.
That would make it easier.
Yes. So if someone wants to make a motion?
I move that we increase the salary to.
Much better percentage.
Three and a half percent. Three and a half percent merit raise effective August 1.
No, it is, Florida is going to do July 1.
July 1. July was our, oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, from July 1.
2015.
Right.
Yes.
I have a motion, and I have a second to further discussion. All of you who signify would say aye. And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Spend it wisely.
Is there any council announcements that we need to do?
Send donations, oh, I was just. Just David.
Okay, so where do I spend it?
The Prince of the Independence Library has their annual fundraiser, their movie fundraiser, wherein the cinema donates a whole theater to us. And the movie will be The Intern, which is a really nice precious movie. $15, and that includes tons of door prizes and free popcorn. And I have it for sale right here.
What's the date?
Oh, the date, yeah, Monday, March 7. Monday, March 7 at 7:10 at the cinema. So it's always a real fun event. And it raises lots of money for our wonderful library.
Additional announcements?
Yes. The Chamber of Commerce has just released its ballot for First Citizen. And it is streamlined over what it was last year because instead of having an original nomination process and then a runoff, a ballot's a ballot, it's one time, it's vote for who you want now, and all of the results will be processed into the winners. So there is no revoting, it's, it's a pretty simple ballot. And one thing I would suggest is be sure you, whomever or whichever business you nominate, write well about them, don't just send in a sentence that says, this guy is great, because that's not enough for the Chamber Selection Committee to make a decent selection offer.
And, and it also includes businesses?
It's, it's everything. It's business in four different categories, First Citizen, Distinguished Service, and Educator of the Year, Junior First Citizen, and Classified Employee of the Year.
Additional announcements? Please.
Did anybody get the statement yesterday?
Yes, I saw that.
Oh, yes. It was a wonderful turnout. We had about 30, 35 people, showed up great, and it was really interesting. Mr. Everly did a wonderful job.
Those are wonderful. I had a chance to visit with Mr. Opelker at the State of the City address, and I asked him to consider doing one of those. My wife had heard him make a presentation of what downtown independence was like in the 40s when he was growing up. And so I'm passing that on to staff. He did a great, it might be a wonderful thing to have, and I would hope that maybe we could, when we're having some of these kind of presentations, that we can somehow record them, because it's, it's a legacy that is really important. I want to also take a moment, several of you were able to join, join us for the State of the City address. I wanted to thank those of you who came, I wanted to thank city staff for helping, helping me present our community in a, I think, really positive way. There is, the chamber does have an actual video with, with site sound and everything of how it was. The, I did, I did do a PowerPoint presentation, so if you have nothing to do, so maybe I think it's, you can watch it. And anyway.
And 2C1C is reprinting both of the speeches, yours in full, and Monmouth is a little bit abridged because I wanted to make the space equal.
Oh. Yeah, you did a fine job.
Yes.
Thank you. I, it's, we have wonderful people to work with, both here at the dais, at the staff table, and throughout the building, and the folks. Anyway, if there is nothing else, is there a right motion?
To the chair.
All of you say aye, thank you.